Motion to discuss.
Some moved, second.
Maids and seconded. Gentlemen, who wants to start? I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mayor Paye. Members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Stephen Giles. I represent Walmart. And we're here to ask the City Council to authorize the mayor to execute an easement for a sewer line for the Walmart Express on its over-city property, which is just down the street from where the store is planned, on Highway 62. I have with me today Stephen Lowney, an engineer for the project. Cliff McKinney drafted the easement. And essentially, we're here to ask, to answer questions.
Let them look through this stuff. They discussed this last night. Doc?
It's between Thunder Road and Lightning Ridge Road, just west of the Hoedown, on the south side of the highway.
I could show you right where it is on the map.
Basically, right across from Dollar General.
Yes, ma'am. Isn't it?
It's a little southeast of that.
Little southeast of that.
Rusty Windows Place, the Hoedown, and Windows Place butts up to the city shop property.
So it's more sort of across from the fund spot?
Yes.
Mr. Effion.
And you're just asking permission to do a sewer tap, or what?
Just put a sewer line, a three-inch sewer line, across the city property to hook up to the pump station, which is on, just to the southeast of that.
Has all this been through the Planning Commission and the HDC and all that other sort of stuff?
This is the start.
This is the start?
This is the start of all of it, right?
It's to go a little bit further back.
Yeah.
We've always said, and I use "we" loosely, that we aren't going to vote on anything that hasn't had the adequate time to the public, and other than rumors to the effect of whenever people read the article in the paper several months ago in regards to Walmart Expresses, I think this would be one thing that, at this point in time, the only thing that would be nice to know is what the plan is, and not even be talking about sewer easements or anything else at this point in time. Walmart headquarters is close enough, I'm sorry, they can come back.
Gentlemen, drove from Little Rock. Up here, all three of them.
I'm also not comfortable really discussing this until we've had a chance to look over the paperwork, do a little bit of research, listen to some people.
Ms. Blankenship, does this need to go through planning?
I was going to suggest perhaps you could explain to these gentlemen what the procedure is, so that they would do it right and correctly.
We're going backwards.
And y'all wouldn't be upset, and they wouldn't be frustrated. The procedure is to bring your proposal to the building inspector, let him know what you want to do, let him peruse your plans, then he brings it with you to the Planning Commission for review. And if you need something like an easement, usually the Planning Commission recommends to this table to let that happen. But this is the first anybody's heard of it, so they don't know what to do, the planning department hasn't went over it either. But you should have been told that upfront. I apologize for that.
Anybody else? Gentlemen here talk to y'all. You can talk to them.
We could make one request. Of course, we'd prefer if you'd vote on this issue tonight, but there are really two issues in front of you. One is a right of entry to allow us to just go on the city property, to do some environmental testing, and survey work, and other things related to putting in the easement. And the other is the actual easement. And the right of entry doesn't commit you to anything other than just letting our inspectors do some inspections on the property. So if you could at least vote on that issue, so that we could be doing that, we'd be very grateful.
Ponnell?
Isn't that an administrative issue, you or either the appropriate department head can take care of?
That's why, that's why I sent an email to you guys last night, and told you this was going to be on the table today, so you would have a heads-up on it. Granted, you didn't have the documents, but then I didn't have them till yesterday either. So. Mr. Berry?
Yes, a question for the city attorney. Is this an administrative, the right to inspect an enter agreement? Do we really need a resolution?
In looking at this, and talking to the gentlemen up here, I believe that the mayor could sign off on allowing them to enter the property and do the inspection, because it's only a 15-day, it's not a permanent disposal of property from the city. But the mayor has been kind enough, I think, to bring this, to let you have a say in that portion, at least tonight, so that you know what's going on, so that nobody down the road says you're hiding the ball. Because unfortunately, in this town, that, that has been an issue over the last many years.
Certainly has. I don't want to be accused of anything.
And so, do, does it require in the law that you okay the 15-day entry? I don't think so. I think the mayor probably can do that. But we have a resolution for you to sign, if you're willing, or to allow the mayor to do that, for that simple inspection. Then there's a second, which you will have to, if they proceed with the finding that is useful, you will have to pass an orders, because that will be a permanent nature of giving away a right of the land for use, for the sewer line, once it becomes time to put it in, if they get through planning and all the other steps that they will be pursuing. But simply to enter on the property and inspect, that, I think, will also aid them in their ability to properly present it to planning. At some point, they're going to have to bring their drawings and everything, and in order, part of what they're looking for is to get on that property and make sure they're not killing blind salamanders, I think, and also to make sure that the land will sustain what they're looking at. And that's something they'll have to present, at least the sustainability part, to the planning.
If I might, if I might speak.
Go ahead.
He's exactly right. If we, the easement is necessary to do the project when we get that far, if we, if we go there. But the thing is, being able to figure it out and make sure it works, we need to be able to get on the property and do that first, before we can do the presentation to Planning Commission.
Mr. Berry?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to at least bring up for discussion a resolution directed at the mayor to execute the right to inspect an enter agreement.
Maids and seconded. Need for a discussion? Mr. Ponnell?
Well, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Blankenship. We fought for years to make sure that people were aware of how you do capital improvements in this town, and we're kind of running backwards. And I don't want to use the word "cell tower," but, you know, I can see another one coming. And I'd really not like to get into the administrative responsibilities of the mayor and his department heads. I would really like to see the decision made to allow them to do their site work, based on what they're asking for, and that's permission to get on city property. And I don't see where we need to enter into that. And then, whenever it starts going from there, billing, as Ms. Blankenship said, there's a method in place to address the rest of it.
Ms. Balance?
I am certainly not comfortable signing off on anything, anything, tonight, especially in light of the situation my colleague just mentioned. Who knows? If we sign this, it may just be a runaway train before we know it. So I'm very hesitant to even discuss this any further tonight, especially since we just received this paper when we came into the meeting. Might go as far as to say, this scares me to death to sign, sign off on anything right now. I'd like to have a chance to consult with my attorney. I'd like to have a chance to listen to people. I'd like to have a chance to think about this a little. I don't appreciate it being sprung on us at the last minute. Thank you.
Mr. Ponnell?
Again, with all due respect, I think our city attorney addressed that it's within the mayor's purview to grant access to city property. And as far as I'm concerned, I would support that, but I wouldn't support signing anything in writing, because I don't want to get accused of micromanaging.
Okay, now, I'm confused. So you're saying it's in my purview, is the mayor to do so?
That's what he said.
Mr. Weber said. But you don't want to do a resolution, and we just go ahead and take care of it on the, with a signature. Is that correct? I want to be perfectly clear before I leave this table. Ms. Balance?
I say, if you want to do it, it should be on you. You should carry the full responsibility.
Absolutely. Let's sign it tonight, then.
So I hope you're very, very sure about what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentlemen? They drove a long way. You better ask them now.
Well, I'm sure we'll have more questions as time goes along, but right now, I haven't had time to think about it.
I understand something. The mayor can sign a resolution?
No, no, no. That's not what I said. We don't even need the resolution.
Okay, so the resolution is off the table for now?
Oh, that's what I, in discussion, I said, the city attorney said we didn't need to have one, and I was supporting that as far as an administrative.
Thank you.
Procedure.
I appreciate the clarification.
Mary? Yes, sir, you can.
Thank you all for your time and attention. I really appreciate that. I wondered if I could ask, maybe if we could get placed on an agenda, because we know we're going to have to come back here to the council to get the authorization for the mayor to sign the easement. I wondered if, if we could maybe get placed on an agenda now, or set sometime, so that we can kind of plan that. We know we're going to have to come back.
Sir, how about after you go through all the other steps?
How long?
After you go through all the other steps, maybe January?
I would hope not.
But we don't know how long it'll take.
No, I don't, I don't know. You have to get a tree removal permit from the Planning Commission.
Probably have to do a whole lot of things. Go through public hearings, and all sorts of fun things like that.
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
Any further questions? All right.
State financial.
You're here.
Show your motion.
It's just a motion to discuss.
Okay, okay. All right.
I thought you made a motion to have the attorney do something.
So was, was there a motion? Did you just make?
No, it was a motion to discuss.
Okay, discuss. All right. Anything else?
No, that's not, excuse me.
My motion was to discuss the resolution. It went to sign a number and vote. It was a motion to discuss the resolution.
So we need?
We discussed it.
We discussed it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so this other part needs to go to planning? The permanent sanitary easement, temporary construction easement agreement has to go to planning? Is that correct?
Everything has to go to Bobby Ray first.
Okay. I think they've already talked about it.
We did talk to Bobby Ray. He, he, I'm aware that we need to go through him. Question was, what is the first meeting we can hear? That's, that's the question. What, what is, when can we first submit, be it the tree permit and this, all at the same meeting?
That's the director of planning, right there.
Okay.
Get her out in the hall and beat her up.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know who to ask, that's all. Thank you.
Anything else before they go? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing you again, hopefully.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip, gentlemen.
Okay.
All right, next on the agenda is roll call votes? We'll get it over there soon.
To discuss.
Second?
Second.
I was interested in talking about roll, oh.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, open.
I was interested in talking about roll call votes, for many reasons. One of those reasons would be, so it would be very clear in the minutes every time we had roll call votes. And I'm not necessarily saying we need roll call votes to discuss, or, or for a recess, or simple things like that, but when it comes down to making final decisions, I'm interested in having roll call votes, so that each of us are certainly accountable for our votes, and so that, that the citizens can look back through the records and see who voted which way when it comes time to vote on us, and see how we performed, and if, if our ideas and values and so forth are similar to the, to the voters. Also, it's possible that, if heaven forbid, the City Council gets into yet another lawsuit, sometimes it might make a difference whether somebody voted for an, an issue, or against an issue, when it came down to that sort of thing. I don't know. Maybe not. But those are the reasons I wanted to talk about having roll call votes. So I'll, I'll give it to somebody else if they'd like to.
Mr. Effion.
I think it would be simple enough to do that on ordinances and resolutions. It's not a real complicated thing, and it wouldn't take that much longer.
No, it wouldn't. I like roll call votes.
Yeah.
Mr. Berry?
I don't, I don't know what difference it makes. It appears that our clerk has already given a roll call vote. For example, office space, or, for example, discussion of alcohol beverage tax, motion carried 4-0, and Miss Balance abstaining, and Mayor Proten voting aye. She pretty much says who votes and who doesn't.
Yeah.
Without being a roll call.
Mr. Ponnell?
Our clerk does a great job.
I agree with what Mr. Berry just said. I'd like to, and I've advocated this from beginning and previous council even, in, in doing a lot of research in the past, and ordinances, and their planning, one of the things that I've found that is very interesting, is there are a lot of cities, and it doesn't get into this, well, you can't compare this city with Eureka Springs. When you look at an ordinance that passed, whether it's online, or you walk into City Hall and you look at it, you can see on that ordinance, because there is no place to annotate a 4-2 vote, or whatever. These cities actually had the yeas and nays by name. And it's even mentioned in the Arkansas Municipal League handouts, that it's, it's a recommended, and it's easier, because then you don't have to go back to, to figure out, okay, here's, here's an ordinance that was passed in June of 2006. Try to figure out what meeting minutes you need to try to find, to see who, and I, and I think the most important part is, when it comes to ordinances, as far as the, the roll call, I think Robert's Rules of Order says that any time you have a requirement for a two-thirds vote, that you do a roll call. Personally, I'm against even trying to attempt to understand and use Robert's Rules of Order for a body like this. But I think it is important that a roll call vote, if it's taken during the reading and a passing of an ordinance, that it be recorded on that ordinance, whenever it, it goes into the permit file. I think anything else would, it would just a matter of defending our position of what, what position we took on issues that maybe didn't get to that point. And like Mr. Berry said, the clerk's doing an excellent job as far as putting in the minutes, what the vote was, and basically covering who abstained, or who didn't vote yes, and those are the smaller numbers, and you can read who's present. I don't think, for the most part, I think if it's a questionable issue, and there's a concern, I think maybe the, the head of the table could, can look at the issue, or if there's not a clarification even from the city clerk, knowing who voted yea or nay. I remember several years ago, that somebody asking for people to, to say how they voted, because she couldn't hear what they were saying. And I've seen people at this table not vote, and it be recorded 6-0, or 5-1, or whatever the case might be. But I think it would be very important to be able to roll call vote, final passing of ordinances, which I believe is already required, but ensuring that it's also on the ordinance itself. It's not signed, it's just typed on the, a test page, that yeas and nays, here was the yeas, and here was the nays.
Ms. Balance?
I move to, I move that we have roll call votes in cases of resolutions, and final votes on ordinances, and to have the results of those roll call votes added to the ordinances or the resolutions, when they're printed up for signing.
Maids and seconded. Need for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Next one is Parks ordinance. Discussion of Parks ordinance. Motion to discuss.
I'll discuss.
Mr. Effion.
Yeah, well, this, this is pretty self-explanatory, and it's.
We need a motion, Mr. Effion.
I make a motion to.
Need a second?
Second.
Maids and seconded. Okay, go.
Okay. This is pretty self-explanatory. It's pretty much an amendment to ordinance 1906. And it's just a little bit of visibility and accountability, and, in effect, oversight on, on parks, by the City Council. I have to say that the, the whole cell tower debacle kind of makes, makes me lean even more in this way. But I think the more oversight you can have, the better. You can't have too much. I don't think you can have too much in these cases, where you're, where you're using city land. A lot of people are actually very attached to the green spaces, and don't want anything done to the green spaces. You know, there's just a lot of issues that people have in this town, and I think it would just, this would be the simplest way to alleviate people's fears about what's going on with their land, and their money. I mean, this doesn't affect parks at all, as far as their money and the way they spend it. They can do whatever they want with it, but they have to come before council.
Well, if we're to use that logic, then let's just extend this to Public Works, too, and let's have them bring every expenditure before us. Let's also do it with the police department. Let's also do it with the fire department, because that's basically what we're doing here. We're trying to micromanage a department. Now, if you can show me just cause why this ordinance has suddenly appeared out of nowhere in an emergency, it says, I thought I read "emergency" somewhere in there, declaring an emergency. Well, golly, you know, I've not detected any emergency in the community. You know, we set parks up for the very reason to counter making it a political football, which is what this ordinance does. It will enable us to scrutinize every move that parks makes. We're already being criticized for not being able to deal with the issues before this city, and we want to present ourselves and encumber this body with having to approve everything that comes down the pike from the Parks Commission. I just, I'm just appalled that anything like this would come before us, because anybody in this community understands what a good job the Parks Commission is doing. They've got a dedicated revenue stream. They probably have a bigger job than any other department in this city, managing the properties and doing the good job that they have. You look at all of our Parket Parks, you look at the skate park, you look at one of the largest city parks in America, Lake Leatherwood, and for us to presume that we know better than the people who spend their days and hours and weeks overseeing this, well, let's just do it for the whole city. Why stop here?
Mr. Berry?
I'm not even sure we can do this. This is like picking and choosing a buffet out of the state enabling legislation. We, we, this was established, this commission, the Parks Commission, which is an autonomous commission, under a state ordinance, or state law, state statutes. And what it's doing is taking away the rights that the state ordinance, state statute says that the commission has. And I think what it's doing is picking and choosing, and I kind of refer to the city attorney, whether or not we can even do this. Ordinance.
Ponnell? Well, to piggyback on what has already been said, I think that discussion came up a while ago, and what we could do stronger or lesser than what state code says, and I think we had gotten an, an opinion from the attorney, as far as what we could and could not do with the CAPC and Parks and Recreation. But I'd like to bring up two interesting things, if I could. They may or may not apply to this discussion. Number one, the ordinance that has been written with the intent of amending ordinance number 1906, ordinance number 1906 was the ordinance that made, that codified the voter's approval of a quarter cent sales tax on, that goes to Parks and Recreation, which was then again, and this was 1906, was approved under Mayor Satori back in November of 2002, for five years, which meant that there should have been something done five years later, which there was. There was a vote of the people to, as it was explained to me, to take away the sunset clause, and leave the quarter percent sales use tax going to the city. However, the city beyond that did not do anything. They did not codify that vote. Local attorney opinion is that if the citizens voted for the approval to take out the sunset clause and remain the quarter percent sales tax, it's still good whether we did an ordinance or not. But first of all, I think, number one, the parties that are concerned are attacking the wrong ordinance. They ought to be attacking the code, which, and is attacking state code, but I don't, I don't think, even if the words were doable, that we could amend, or should be amending ordinance 1906, because that was an ordinance to levy a quarter of 1% sales tax and use tax for a period of five years within the city of Eureka Springs. I went through every single ordinance that has been written since this one was written, code, et cetera. The only thing I found out was that we did have a vote in 2007 to continue it, and take away the sunset clause, and that was the last that the city had anything to do with. The only thing that I would say this table needs to do, is we need to codify, so we don't run into somebody going, well, gee whiz, you know, we, we let this thing ride for three years, and, you know, that, they need to be refunding the quarter percent sales tax. That, that's my only, only concern, is that we're even attacking the wrong ordinance.
Is that both your concerns? You said you had two.
The, the fact that we're going for amending the wrong ordinance, and number two, that the city has not codified the results that we should have three years ago, in January, of putting that in the code, that quarter percent sales tax is good forever.
Anybody else? Ms. Balance?
I've moved, moved to postpone discussion of this until the next meeting.
Did you want me to address?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry.
Since I was asked, I think what this ordinance, as you have it drafted before you does, is actually, potentially do away with your Parks Commission, because you're basically taking everything they do, except routine maintenance from them, and the routine maintenance is handled by the Parks Department, not by the commission. The Parks employees are the ones that change the toilet paper in the bathroom. Commission, but they're the ones that, that do the day-to-day.
Right.
And what you're doing is, you're taking everything away from them. You're basically rescinding your commission. And I have to agree with Councilman Ponnell. You're attacking the wrong ordinance. If that's what you're wanting to do, you've got to go back and address it directly to the ordinance that created the Parks Commission, not the tax that funds a portion of their And to Councilman Balance's motion to put this off, this is. And to Councilman Ballance's motion to put this off, this emergency clause won't pass muster, I don't believe, in a court of law. So I would strongly suggest you not pass this particularly with the emergency clause, but you long and hard consider what you're doing here. Because if you're truly disposing of a commission, that takes a different effort than what you're doing here. But what you're doing here is basically taking all their power away from them. And the way the state code reads, that power's been granted to them. The only way it can be removed is by a 75% vote of this council, a three-quarter vote. You need five votes.
I move to postpone discussion of this until the next meeting.
Okay, before we do, we're going to let Mr....
Second.
We're going to let him talk. Go ahead.
I'll be brief.
Got the motion to second.
And I guess I'll be here again. But with all due respect to the author and the supporters of this, the point that Mr. Weaver made up about the ordinance is correct and as did Mr. Ponnell. I also want to try and explain that from my discussions with Mr. Weaver, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Hayes, that state code cuts both ways. We can't act as a department any more than you all can act, than have us act as a department. So it's state code, and I heard state code bandied around through this entire city. I brought my own state code book, and I would direct you to 14269201. And read the shells. Shell means you will. It doesn't mean you may. It doesn't mean if you want to. It doesn't mean you can take a little bit of this and a little bit of that and make some kind of homogenized something out of the Parks Commission. You shall follow the state code as it is written, and we have to follow it and you all have to follow it. So please bear that in mind when you attempt to write an ordinance. The other thing I may point out is that the wording in this, approval to modify, alter, construct, install, demolish, does that mean if I put up a goose fence, I should come to the council and say, can I put up a goose fence? And you all say, yeah. And then when I want to take it down, I come up here and I say, can I take that goose fence down? And they'll say, yeah. I mean, that's just incredibly picky, you know? And I would suggest that the author of this look very, very carefully at what kind of wording we have in here, notwithstanding that this is against state code to begin with. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Speaking out for everyone. With all due respect, I know there was time spent in writing this and intent was appropriate. I think that there are ways, and I mentioned, and I'm not going to waste time trying to find the references now. I think we have enough in our code book, in effect, that can control legally parks, projects. And one of the discussions that I had with an individual today was, well, what if somebody gives us a million dollars and wants to put a maypole up and, you know, such-and-such piece of city property? Well, we have things in place, just like what we told the gentleman from Walmart, go the direction of the map and follow the rules. And if there's some concerns that may not be covered in those particular ordinances or parts of the code, then maybe we need to look at changing that. But, you know, I think we're getting on very shaky, thin ice in trying to put the words contrary to what the state code says and try to do what the desire is. And that's not necessarily to micromanage, but to be able to have some citizen control in what happens. And that can happen by people going to Parks Commission meetings. It can happen by people going to public hearings. It can happen by commissions, whether it's planning, border zoning adjustments, HDC or whomever, looking at their regulations and saying, here are some things that we maybe need to tighten up. And at the same time, there is no authority right now for parks or the commission to buy, sell, or trade property. And I think that was one of the first things, along with another project, that came up that rests solely at this table. And if they do, then they're in violation of the law, not us. And I would rather, I don't want to say this the wrong way, I'd rather them be in violation of the law than us. And the intent is remarkably well-taken, but I think there's better ways of making it happen.
Motion to postpone in the second. Any further discussion?
Postpone till when?
Next meeting. That's what I understood. You're correct. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Raphael, what's your vote? So what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three, four, and, okay, thank you.
Good.
I move to put a moratorium on general, on capital improvements to the city parks for six months.
We've already voted. We've already voted. You can't bring that in.
You can't bring these items up to the table like this. They've got to get on the agenda.
No, it's got to be on the next agenda if you want it on there. Okay, next in line is discussion of citizen advisory panel. Dr. Kirkpatrick, Mr. Raphael, and Ms. Ballance. Somebody jump in. Motion to discuss first. Okay.
What do you discuss?
Second?
Second.
Go. Go ahead.
Think about the only thing is, that's the thing, to pick some people to help us out, ease some of the burden off our shoulders while it looks recovered once. They will have actually no power whatsoever except make recommendations with the council. If we don't like them, too bad, we don't take them.
If we do like them, we can accept them and talk it over. But again, they have no power whatsoever, and I do feel that through their research and all, would help us out greatly individually and as a whole.
Further? Berry?
I'm curious as to who would select the 10 members or more, and how would they operate?
I'd like to see each councilor say pick out two members.
Twelve? Twelve on the committee? It's up to y'all.
Well, I think basically what we're doing is we're asking for citizen input. We've already got one committee that the person who was basically chairing it is no longer sitting at this table, and we haven't heard word about one about it since. So I think that opening our communications to, or encouraging more than what we probably have in the past, I get more advice on Friday mornings after a Thursday night meeting that I care to sometimes think about, but at the same time, I welcome it. And I think as long as we are working as a team and being able to funnel those things in the right direction, say, hey, you know, we've got this issue, and I've already had three people call me concerned about it, and they're willing to help out, I'll take those three people by the neck and work with them all I have to, to help get something done, and then bring it back to the table or back to a working group. I think that, you know, we tried having an...